K through 12 Social Studies Textbook Adoption Committee Membership Recommendation. And we approve the 2014-15 Budget Timeline. The next item on the agenda is Public Comment. We have three individuals this evening who have signed up to address the Board. When I call your name, if you would please step to the podium, give us your name and your address. Mr. Anderson, who sits to my right, is the timekeeper. You have a minute and a half to address the Board, and he has some cue cards to keep you on task. When you hear the timer go off, if you would please conclude your comments and take your seat. The first individual that has signed up is Debbie Me Ma.
Should I face this way or the other way?
This way. Yes ma'am.
Actually, I'm one of the multiple persons who've signed up for the same topic, or do I still have my one and a half minute?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, okay. We're here, actually, not only me, but also my whole family here to talk about the rezoning of Lipscomb, Brentwood Middle, and Brentwood High, especially Lipscomb. We've been here for nine years in a community. We live in Brentwood Point, too, which is subject to the possible rezoning to another school, which we think is not reasonable because our community has been built for such a long time, almost 30 years, within the Brentwood City limit. Our kids, my, all of my three kids, two of them are present here. They love their school, love their teachers, and I think it's not a good thing for their future education if we're zoned to another school much further away from our home. And they've both been in Lipscomb for three years, and they love their teacher, love their schools, and they won gold medals for both years. We have every good reason to be able to stay with our current school. That's it.
Could you please state for the record your address?
903 Brentwood Point, sorry.
Thank you.
Brentwood Point.
Thank you very much. Next is Jamie Phillips.
Thank you, members of the Board. I would respectfully ask that you reconsider the proposal to rezone Lipscomb Elementary and that you reject that proposal in lieu of a long-range plan. If you look back at the minutes of your meetings over the last several years and count how many times parents have sat in this room and have raised this issue of rezoning, you'll be shocked. I did it today. I did it today. About every eight months, someone in this room raises the issue of rezoning. It may be a large body, like it was in 2010. It may be a small body, like it is tonight. Without constant education and a stable environment, our children are put at risk. Their long-term education is blunted, especially when they're moved outside of the communities in which they live. And that's exactly what's happening here tonight. There are no less than four schools closer to my home than Walnut Grove. Hear me when I say, I have no problem with Walnut Grove. It's an exceptional school. But there's no logical reason, no foundation in reason, to displace families outside of the communities in which they live and send them to other schools. It's not necessary. Better planning solves that problem. 1124 Brentwood Point.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Simpson.
Good evening. I live at 125 Jackson Lake Drive. I'm here tonight to ask you to please reconsider looking at, or to consider looking at alternatives to the current rezoning proposal, and to do this because of the impact it will have on our children, our families, and our community. I live in Jackson Lake, and I've been part of the Lipscomb community for over eight years, and I believe I have a vested interest in Lipscomb's future. I believe this proposal is causing a sense of lost community by dividing parts of our school, a family that doesn't need to be divided. I don't see the logic in pulling some of our mature neighborhoods out of the zone to make room for newer neighborhoods, especially newer neighborhoods that might have some other options for their school of zone. There are several established neighborhoods affected by this proposal, including Jackson Lake and Brentwood Point, that have no more room for growth. Jackson Lake, for example, is a neighborhood of only 60 houses. We are built out. Yes, we know that families will move in and out, but our history shows that our number of school-aged children stays fairly stable. So right now and in the future, I believe Jackson Lake's numbers are fairly small and inconsequential. It is more likely that your newer neighborhoods coming in that are larger, that will have room for growth, and whose number of school-aged children we don't know yet, will cause more of an impact on Lipscomb's overcrowding than we ever will. I feel that we are not a community of complainers. We want to be part, we want to be a community that's part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes this evening's public comment. Next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Board members, good to see you this evening. I'll remind you that we do have a Let's Talk Schools meeting scheduled for tomorrow, not at Independence. I hope that you're able to attend. At your position tonight, you will find a red armband and a red ribbon. Today marks the beginning of Red Ribbon Week, which is our national campaign and state campaign to say no to drugs. So please wear that ribbon and that armband with pride, and hopefully our students and our community will help us reinforce the importance of saying no to drugs. In addition, this week is also National Bus Safety Week, and I would remind those individuals that are in the audience and watching by television, the importance of stopping when a school bus arm is extended for the safety of our kids and to keep yourself from being At this point in time, I would ask that Mrs. Carol Birdsong step forward, and we have a number of individuals and entities that we want to recognize. As Mrs. Birdsong is coming forward, if I could get Dr. Donna Wright, our Assistant Superintendent of High Schools, to please step into the well, along with Mrs. Denise Goodwin, the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools. We're going to begin by recognizing this year's amazingly large crop of schools of distinction, and we're going to begin by asking Brentwood High School to come forward into the well. Brentwood High School, as everybody knows, is one of the highest-achieving school districts in all of the land, and they have been recognized by the State of Tennessee as being a reward school for their student achievement performance. Congratulations. We are so proud of you for the hard work that you do. This is a well-deserved recognition. Let's give them a round of applause. The next performance school that we're going to recognize is the fabulous Edmondson Elementary School. Principal Julie Swan is here with her...
Swan.
What did I say, Swan? That's from my former district. I'm sorry, Julie. It's been four years now. You think I know. From Edmondson Elementary School. Congratulations, Julie. Sparrow.
One, two.
Julie, I'll reward you with a Diet Mountain Dew. I really am sorry about that. Next is Franklin High School. Please come forward and be recognized. Mrs. Dickerson and her capable team. Franklin High School is also being recognized by the State of Tennessee for their exceptional performance. Congratulations. We're so proud of you.
Maybe we could see one of the banners.
Yes, sir. I think they're going to be on our webpage all from now on. We'll turn it around.
Let's see one over there.
Ms. Dickerson, while you have that banner, if you'll turn around and let the Board see the banner for its beauty.
There we go.
Very good. Congratulations.
Very nice.
Next is Dr. Eric Lifsey from Page Middle School. Please come forward and be recognized. Page Middle School is being recognized for its outstanding performance on student achievement results by the State of Tennessee. Congratulations, Dr. Lifsey, and your marvelous team.
Ready? One, two, and three. Thank you.
Going in alphabetical order, we next have Grassland Elementary School. Please come forward to be recognized as a State of Tennessee reward school. We are, we are so proud of your performance, Dr. Gordon, and your staff as well.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Next, we have the transformed school of Hillsboro. Please come forward and be recognized. Congratulations. We're glad that you're here.
Okay, ready? Hugs, hugs first. Poor Donna has no one to hug. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Next up is Independence High School, and Dr. Todd Campbell, please come forward. And look at this, we have some student exemplars here. How are you, sir? Good to see you tonight. Good to see you.
Ready? One, two, and three. Very nice. Thank you.
Board members, I'd also like to point out that these two young students from Independence High School are also school leaders in our Ladders to Hope initiative, so we appreciate that. Next, we have Dr. Webb from Kenrose Elementary School. And team.
And student.
And a student. They are being recognized tonight by the State of Tennessee for their outstanding student achievement results.
Wonderful. One, two, and three. Nice. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. We're very proud of all of you. And next, we have Lipscomb Elementary School. Please come forward to be recognized. And you have a fan club here tonight. That's wonderful.
Okay, ready? One, two, and three. Lovely. Thank you.
The next school to be honored by the State of Tennessee is Nolansville Elementary School, led by Paula Waits and team. Congratulations. We're so proud of your accomplishment.
Ready? One, two, and three.
And next up, we have educator extraordinaire, Tom Morris, and his staff, leading Oakview Congratulations on your fine accomplishments. And next, we have Perry Creek Elementary School. Come forward and be recognized. The State of Tennessee has recognized you as a reward school recipient. Congratulations, Principal Chatham, and your able team.
Ready? One, two, three.
Next, we have Principal Doggarn and her team from Scales Elementary School.
Okay, Laura, just a little bit. Perfect. Thank you.
And next, we have the Summit Spartans. Please come forward, Dr. Charles Farmer and team. Great job, team. We're so proud of you.
Squeeze in just a little bit. One, two, and three.
Next, we have Sunset Middle School, led by Dr. Brown and his team. Please come forward and be recognized as a Tennessee reward school. Congratulations. We're very, very proud of you.
You almost spilled it around the room, please. Okay. Ready? One, two, and three.
Next, we have the leadership team from Walnut Grove Elementary School, being recognized by the State of Tennessee for its outstanding achievement in student academics. Congratulations. We're proud of this team.
Perfect squeeze on it, though. There's plenty of room. Okay. Ready? One, two, three.
Congratulations.
So the short one's kind of cute.
And next, we have Winstead Elementary School, being recognized. Please come forward. Congratulations on your achievements and for being recognized as one of Tennessee's reward schools.
One, two, and three.
And the final school in this category is Woodland Middle School. Please come and be recognized. Priscilla Pfizer and her able educator extraordinaire.
One, two, and three. Thank you.
Now, Board members, it was very exciting to announce those awards, but we have another group of schools that are being recognized by the State, not only for their performance, but also for their ability to grow students to even higher levels of achievement. First is Allendale Elementary School, being recognized as a reward school for performance and progress. And next, we have Brentwood Middle School, being recognized for performance and progress. And next, we have Clovercroft Elementary School, being recognized for performance and progress, led by Dr. Laura Lechance.
Okay, ready? One, two, and three.
Next, we have Crockett Elementary School to be recognized. What a marvelous team you have here, Robert.
Thanks, sir.
Come forward and be recognized. Next, we have a school that's, I think, received recognition all year long, and that's Page High School, led by Dr. Andrea Anthony and team.
One, two, and three.
We also happen to have a Teacher of the Year in that group.
Woo-hoo!
Lori Malden. Yeah, there you go. Next is Grassland Middle School, led by Lily Lefler. Dr. Lefler, congratulations. Please come forward and be recognized as a Performance and Progress reward school. Next, we have Sunset Elementary School, being recognized by the State of Tennessee for performance and progress. Karen Caldwell, the principal.
One, two, and three.
And our next school is Trinity Elementary School, led by Chris Schwartz. Board members, we had more reward in Performance and Progress schools than any school district in the state, and if we keep this up, I suggest that you buy stock in Banner Company. That completes my report. Carol, do you have anything else?
I do.
You have more.
Oh, I do.
We are honoring students and staff tonight in the area of athletics, academics, and the arts. We are going to start at Ravenwood High School with Wesley Horky. He is, has been named an Under Armour All-American. He is one of only 100 players nationwide to achieve this recognition, and we believe this is the first for our school district. His coach is Will Hester. In academics, also at Ravenwood High School, Ozzy Bombs. He was named a 2014 National Achievement Scholarship Program semifinalist, and Frank Brown at Ravenwood also achieved that honor as well. At Brentwood High School, we're going to talk about some All-State Choir honors. Jordan Breeze and Andrew Fisher received that honor. Their director is Natalie Pratt. At Centennial High School, Ally Brown, Jake Cannon, Amelia Edwards, Sarah Moore, and Rachel Keller were named to the All-State Choir. Their director is Mindy Hoover. At Franklin High School, Elizabeth Schneck received the honor. Her director is Cynthia Furman. Independence High Schools, Joseph Carter and Andrew McGuire were named to the All-State Choir. Their choral director is Mary Lee Attenan. At Ravenwood High School, Melissa Danley, Jen Am, Colin Shea, Ellen Sedersohn, Emily Whitlow, and Sarah Yang were named to the All-State Choir. Their director is Lauren Ramey. And from Summit High School, Samantha Benjamin, Kayla Hack, Selena James, Trevor Cassis, Caleb Kettering, Nicole Turner, and Christina Wall were named to the All-State Choir. Jenna Ellsbury is their choral director. Now on to staff spotlights. Walnut Grove Elementary School's Janet Taylor was named the 2013-14 Tennessee Art Education Association Middle Region Art Educator of the Year. Congrats to Janet. And Michelle Vincy at Fairview Middle School was named to the Tennessee Art Education Association Board of Directors for the state middle schools. And we saw Dr. Anthony just moments ago, but Dr. Andrea Anthony from Page High School was named the National Association of Secondary School Principals' Principal of the Year for the State of Tennessee. Congrats to all of our students and staff members. Thank you, Ms. Birdsong.
Thank you, Ms. Birdsong. Next item on the agenda is a board chairman's report. I'd like to thank Jackson National Life, who I omitted last month thanking them for their sponsorship of First Camp. I just inadvertently omitted their name, and I wanted to make sure that we did properly thank them for their sponsorship of First Camp. And also, thank you to Officer Guy Whitley, who provided our security at Thursday night's work session. I think most of our principals and assistant principals have left, but if there are any of you still in the audience, if you would stand and let us recognize you, and thank you for being here this evening. Thank you very much for being here. We always appreciate your attendance and support. I'd also like to recognize Lipscomb Elementary School teacher, Mary Beth Carroll, who was nominated for the Tennessee Education Lottery Educator of the Month Award, and Dr. Andrea Anthony, who's sitting there on the front row, is a finalist for the Women in School Leadership Award, so congratulations. And I would like to thank Melinda Miller at the Aloft Hotel, who secured a bank of free nights for our PTOs to use as part of their fundraising activities, as well as Mr. John Mayer from John Mayer Builders, who donated $30,000 to the Brentwood High School Athletic Department to access buses at Carpenter Bus Sales. And as part of that generous gift, Mr. Kurt Mitchell of Carpenter Bus Sales is offering significantly reduced bus rental rates to our other schools. So I'd like to thank all three of them, and Ms. Miller and Mr. Mayer are both members of our inaugural ambassador class. Also, thank you to the Nissan Corporation, who gave us a $10,000 donation to our Ladders to Hope. So thank them. We really do appreciate their support as well. And that concludes my report for this evening, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Item 3A2, New Business. This is Board Policy Revisions for First Reading. It's on page 87. It's 4.60511, Graduation with Honors or Distinction, and this is an editorial change only. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am chair and board members. This requires one reading and one vote. Because it's an editorial change, I do recommend approval as submitted.
So I'd like to make a motion. Motion for Ms. Mills.
Second.
Second for Mr. Welch. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 2 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3B1. This is a 2013-14 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment. It's a PTO position located on page 91. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. I do recommend approval of this resolution for $14,365 as submitted.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Wimberly. Second for Ms. Hammond. Ms. Mills?
I am not going to be able to support this budget resolution tonight. I think I expressed at the work session that I don't think that our PTOs should have to or be allowed to fund positions in our buildings. I think if the position is a needed position, it's incumbent upon us to fund that position, so I can't support this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Vogt?
Dr. Looney, if you could speak a little bit more to this request. I too have reservations about funding, the PTO's funding, anything that would affect the bottom line of the education. I believe in equity amongst our schools, and I have some reservations about this. However, if it's an assistant or an administrative position, that, to me, does not function in the same way as direct consequences to the educational outcome of our students. So if you could maybe explain this position a little bit more, that might be of help and might get me over my reservation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for the opportunity. The Board several years ago did have a position change, and that is to forbid PTOs from hiring teachers, professional staff members, and we have not done that since that time. However, it has been a practice, and honestly continues to be a practice in the current budget, to allow PTOs to hire support staff members, specifically teacher assistants or library aides or front office workers. And we have a number of them employed throughout the district at various schools that are PTO-funded positions, and they're annually funded, so they have to resubmit a plan every year to fund a position if they desire to have that. As you very well know, a number of years ago, I think it was the first year that I came on board, we actually increased the staffing ratio for teacher assistants. When I originally arrived, it was 125 students for one teacher assistant. We went through some real tough budget times, some real lean years, and that ratio was changed to 150. And since that time, schools have been trying to come up with creative ways to earn back some support that they've needed. And years moving forward, I hope that we get to the point where we can revisit the ratio of teacher assistants, in particular because of all the additional burdens that LEAs have or local education associations have as relates to IEPs for students. As you know, our students with disability ratio continues to increase, and so too does all of the testing requirements that have come both from the federal and state level. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, but I guess I still have a concern where a teaching assistant does have direct contact with a student and potentially that student's ability and their educational experience. So whether or not a PTO is able to provide funds to fill that need is concerning, and I too agree with your position that we need to go back to the days when we were appropriately funding these positions. I believe I can support this at this time, but I continue to have reservations, and it's a process for me at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 9 yes, 2 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3C1. This is an Intro Category Transfer for Destination Imagination on page 93. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. I don't know if you've ever participated in the great events that Destination Imagination has for our students, but we have a large number of students that have participated in DI over the course of the last several years. I typically go to the final ceremony at Brentwood Middle School. I think that's where it is, isn't it, Brentwood Middle? It is at Brentwood Middle School each year, and the auditorium is full of families and kids. Bottom line is this. We have had, if you go back several years when this school district endorsed site-based decision-making, this was one of the areas where each school did something a little bit differently. And the Board has, in its current pay schedule, a stipend that's available for principals to use, in the amount of $1,000 and some change for elementary and $500 and some change for secondary schools. Some principals use that stipend, some don't. Some DI coordinators get paid, some don't. Some of the DI programs are run by parents, some are run by staff. So we have a little bit of everything, to be honest with you. And so, in an effort to clean it up and to get everybody on one page, I'm proposing that we shift $15,000, and instead of us doing what we have traditionally done, we would actually be contracting for services with Destination Imagination, and it would be up to Destination Imagination to decide who gets compensated, how much they get compensated, and that sort of thing. I will put a caveat in that recommendation, that is, we have seven schools currently, which is far fewer than what we have traditionally had, seven schools that currently have made a commitment to pay stipends to teachers, and so that commitment would need to remain in place regardless of whether you approve this recommendation or not.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Wimberly? Second for Mr. Gregory? Is there any discussion? Mr. Welch?
Thank you. Well, Dr. Looney, I just follow up on kind of what I asked you at our work session last week. At the time, you weren't prepared to answer, which was fair. I kind of sprung the question on you at the time, but as I said, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but it's more, what is kind of the evaluation instrument that we're going to pay stipends for this particular extracurricular activity versus something like a youth lead or another academic-based activity that is managed by our teachers and staff that does benefit the students? How do we sort of gauge that these are the ones that we want to provide supplements for versus these are the ones that are going to be solely voluntary for our students?
It's a great question. We've had a lot of conversations since you posed that difficult question. And the truth of it is, one, principals have a lot of discretion as to what they pay stipends for now, and so they have a lot of latitude. In this particular case, this year is a little bit odd because we have some principals that have decided to pay a stipend, and we have some principals that were waiting for additional information from, for me, to be honest with you, to provide a solution to this matter. So I think that this is one of those years where we need to try to bridge a gap until we can get that evaluation process in place. It might be that next year, moving forward, we have a completely different approach. The challenge with DI this year is the programming and planning has already commenced, and so, you know, short of me either directing principals how to spend their stipend money, or short of having a significant negative impact on DI as it has been running in recent years, this is the only viable solution that I could come up with, that's a short-term solution, until we can come up with something longer term that addresses the needs and concerns that you have.
And this is a one-year contract?
Yes, sir, this would be a one-year contract.
How many schools are, is DI currently, what's the word I'm looking for? Partnering with?
Well, I'll give you two answers. The current year, there are seven schools that the principal has made a commitment to pay a stipend. We have historically had in excess of 20 schools participating. So I think the participation rate is 50% less what it typically has been because we've had this time of uncertainty when DI was supposed to kick off in September.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hammond?
Dr. Looney, for the, these dollars that will then be, go directly to DI for them to pay out, will there be limitations that the amount that would be paid out to an individual would be equal to the stipend that seven of our schools have already committed to paying?
I think that would be a logical direction for us to go in. We have not developed a contract for services with DI, but I think that's certainly a legitimate, a legitimate area to pursue. Ironically, there, as I said, there are a number of people that have been involved at various levels in DI. Some have been paid, some haven't been paid, and ultimately, we want to give them some guidance, but we also want to contract for services and not get in their business of who they're paying and who they're not paying. So we want to have some conversations, but not direct their work.
One quick follow-up on that, then. Is it, would this, could these funds possibly cover all the need that's out there, even those seven, and then those funds aren't being used by those seven schools to pay those stipends?
No, ma'am, the seven schools that have committed stipend money have an obligation at this point to follow through. So the $15,000 would cover whatever additional schools wanted to participate, and hopefully some of the fundraising and expenses that relate with competition.
Ms. Vogt?
Dr. Looney, does this present a precedent by doing this? And the secondary question I have is, are, you expressed that you would not desire to instruct principals on how to spend their funds, but is that something that is within your authority? Or, I know that you don't wish to, but if you needed to, is there an alternative route? Or is this, obviously, you're presenting this to us because you feel that this is the best route to go?
Yes, ma'am, I have the authority to direct them. I think it runs counter to what the money was, the way the money was originally designed to be distributed to the schools, to give them some decision-making and what additional staff they reward for additional duties. If you consider the directive, the mandate that we now have from the State of Tennessee to offer differentiated pay, I actually think we might see this grow versus subside. We're going to begin having conversations next month about differentiated pay, and that's probably one very simple and logical way to provide differentiated pay that doesn't drastically alter the current teaching salary structure, which I'm an advocate of doing, not altering that significantly. So I think we might see more of it. I have the authority. I would be hesitant to use that authority. If you read the book Good to Great, this is one of those loose properties that, you know, in the big scheme of things, you're better off letting local decision-makers make those decisions.
Well, thank you for clarifying. I asked it because I thought that might be a question that could potentially rest in the minds of the public. So I'd also like you to answer the first question, though. Does this set a precedent for going forward at this level, the $15,000? Would we be looking at that same amount going forward?
Well, I don't think, I'll yield to your legal counsel, but I will say, from my perspective, because this would, if we were to perpetuate this process, it would be a budget item, and the Board ultimately has the authority to decide what you approve in the budgeting process, so I don't think it sets a precedent. But, you know, my wife says me drinking Diet Mountain Dew in the morning sets a precedent every day, so, Jason, I'll yield to your judgment.
The Board does have the power for these kinds of questions for services to make value judgments as to what's appropriate for the system. So within that, it doesn't inherently establish a precedent. Many of those things that we talk about quite often requiring us to be consistent in our application relate to constitutional rights, student equal access, you know, the discussions we have about community use of school facilities, we have to be consistent, where we don't make value judgments because it's not services provided to us, it's just giving access to the property. So in this case, it's not one of those examples.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 10 yes, 1 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 3C2. This is an Intro Category Transfer for Centennial and Fairview High School Fields. This information is on page 95. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. This is a partial amount of funding to complete the entire repair project for Centennial High School, but it will complete all of the needs at Fairview High School, ready to their dugouts. I do recommend your approval in the amount of $150,000.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Vogt? Second for Mr. Welch? Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 3D, which is the Code of Ethics. Board members, as you know, we have a policy which follows state law, which requires that we adopt annually and approve a Code of Ethics. So we reviewed this Code of Ethics on Thursday evening, and it is before us this evening for our approval. Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Peterson? Second for Mr. Hullett? Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. And I think someone asked me on Thursday evening if we would read this, and I think it's a very good idea if we read this for the opportunity for the public to know what our Code of Ethics does say. So what I'm going to do is I'm going, as I call your name, I'll turn your mic on and give the article in the section, if you would please read that. So I'll start with Mr. Peterson. If you will read Article 1, Section 1 and 2.
I will at all times think in terms of students first, always determining other important things according to how they affect the education and development of students. I will seek to provide equal opportunities for all students in academics, the arts, and athletics.
Ms. Mills, if you will read Article 2, Section 1, 2, and 3.
I will fairly appraise and support both present and future educational needs. I will represent at all times the entire school community and refuse to represent special interests or partisan politics. I will maintain open lines of communication with the community.
Mr. Mesra, if you will read Article 3, Section 1, 2, and 3.
Article 3, My Relations to Our District Employees. Section 1, I will support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve in our district. Section 2, I will strive to secure resources that allow our employees to perform with excellence. Section 3, I will celebrate employee accomplishments and refrain from public critique.
Mr. Anderson, if you will read Article 4, Section 1 and 2.
Article 4 is My Relations with Other Board Members. Section 1, I will recognize that authority rests only with the Board in official meetings. Section 1, I will recognize that authority rests only with the Board in official meetings and that the individual member has no legal status outside of such meetings. Section 2 is, I will at all times comply with the Tennessee Open Meetings Act, the Sunshine Law.
Ms. Hammond, if you will read Section 3 and 4 of Article 4.
Section 3, I will make final decisions only after full discussion of matters at a board meeting. Section 4, I will respect the opinion of other members and will accept the principle of majority rule.
Mr. Hullett, if you will read Section 5 and 6, please.
Section 5, I will attend all regularly scheduled board meetings, excuse me, insofar as possible, and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at those meetings. Section 6, I will work with other Board members to establish effective board policies and to delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent.
Mr. Wimberly, if you will read Article 5, Section 1 and 2.
Article 5, My Relations with Our Superintendent. Section 1, I will support full administrative authority as well as responsibility for the superintendent to properly discharge all professional duties. Section 2, I will support superintendent accountability for working and requiring staff to work within the framework of policies set by the Board.
Mr. Welch, if you will read Section 3 of Article 5 and Section 1 of Article 6.
Section 3, I will refer all complaints and concerns to the superintendent. Article 6, My Relations to Myself. I will inform myself about my duties and responsibilities in current educational issues by individual study and through participation in programs, providing needed information.
Mr. Gregory, if you will read Section 2 and Section 3 of Article 6.
Section 2, I will avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest. Section 3, I will refrain from using my position on the Board for personal or partisan gain.
Ms. Vogt, if you will read Section 4 and 5 of Article 6, please.
Section 4, I will take no private action that will compromise the Board, the district, or administration. Section 5, I will respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law.
Thank you, Board Members. And I'm going to pass around the copy that we need to sign this evening. So I'll pass it to my right. And when, Mr. Peterson, when you sign it, if you'll pass it back around, and we'll take it to the other side of the table. So let's make sure that we sign that before we leave this evening. And thank you all very much for reading those to the public. Next item on the agenda is 3E. This is the Five-Year Capital Outlay Plan for 2013-18. This information is on page 101 and 102. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. Before I make this recommendation, I'd just like to remind primarily the public that this intent to fund is essentially giving notice to the County Commission of when we intend to get their permission for funding. It doesn't necessarily represent when they actually are going to give us the money or when they're going to borrow the money, if they're going to borrow the money. After quite a bit of consideration and ample discussion, I do recommend the Five-Year Capital Outlay Plan as submitted.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Hullett. Second for Ms. Hammond. Mr. Gregory?
Pat, I actually hit that to discuss something on the ethics, but that's passed, so I'll withdraw that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
Mr. Anderson?
Dr. Looney, on the first item, the Northeast Area High School, is there any possibility of getting that completed before the fall of '16?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you were a betting man, what would the odds be that would be done before that?
I wasn't. I wasn't trying to be tricky. We've had, as you know, we've had conversations with the architect. We're planning on using the Summit High School design with some modifications. The architect feels very comfortable that a late spring completion is very, very conservatively doable. So it's a possibility that we could be in by January of '16.
Thank you. So this, the '16, the fall '16 is the...
Well, let me retract that. I meant January 15. Is that right, Jason?
That would be really good, but I really thought... I think you want to hang with your first one.
All right, let me look at this list again. Hang on a second. August of 15. I'm sorry, January 16.
I liked your answer, though, a few seconds ago.
I'm sure it'll be in the newspaper tomorrow.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. That concludes the business on this evening's agenda. I'd like to remind Board Members that we have a Let's Talk School meeting tomorrow evening at Independence, begins at 6 until 7:30. I hope you're able to attend. And we have another one next week on the 29th at Ravenwood, same time. So if there are no further announcements, and I see none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for being here this evening.